I now call the Board of Education regular meeting and work session to order. It's 5:30 PM. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda for April 8th, 2024?
I move to remove item 12 of the consent agenda and special discussion of it until further notice. This item concerns policy 604.1, Student Discipline. I request the district to examine specific questions raised at the March 25th, 2024, March 25th, 2024 board meeting before a second reading is conducted.
We have a motion to remove item 12 from the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda for Monday, April 8th, 2024, the Board of Education regular meeting and work session as set forth? And each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action?
I move to approve the amended agenda for Thursday, April 4th, 2024, Board of Education Special Meeting as set forth. And each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Rountri.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. We have one public hearing tonight for the fiscal year 2024-2025 Certified Budget. This is the second of two public hearings as required by law. The district is proposing a published tax levy rate of 13.90088 per $1,000 of taxable valuation compared to the current rate of 14.66629 in fiscal year 2023-2024. Board Secretary Reesstrom, have we received any written correspondence regarding the fiscal year 25 Certified Budget?
We have not.
Have there been requests to address the board this evening regarding the published hearing?
Yes, we have one.
Thank you. With one speaker this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Reesstrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose to refrain from speaking, in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. To abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. The board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speaker that the board cannot address personnel and student matters. Board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speaker to state her name and address when called to the podium. Ryan, please call our first speaker.
Mary Arenas, and she'll be discussing the topic of proposed tax.
Mary Arenas, and my address. Just my address also. 3015 Kenridge Terrace Northeast Cedar Rapids, Iowa 52402. I live on Kenridge Terrace, which is on the northeast side of Cedar Rapids. And if I understand it correctly, with a house that's worth valued $205,000, my taxes are going to go up $107 a month. To me, as a single mom, that's a lot of money. I know properties around town are going to go up due to, for rent, people who are more impoverished than me. I guess I wouldn't mind so much the rate increase if I saw that the schools were truly doing what they need to do for all students. I came before to ask for a conference about reactive attachment disorder. This year, there were some big mistakes due to a couple things. A RAD conference being denied by the person that, Ann Harper said no to it. But we had more than, I should.
Would you want, for the public, would you want to talk about that during your public comment?
Okay.
Yeah.
They kind of go hand in hand. I could do that there also. Just, I know the private sector, the private schools, some of their buildings are more than 100 years old, and they seem to do it. They don't get the help that the Cedar Rapids School District does with the monies. And I just, there's always other ways, I think. But it's really going to put a big dam on myself financially for the home that I own, and definitely people that are impoverished in our area. Because the rent is going to go up for the people who need the help the most. I just want to see a big difference in the school district and their knowledge if this were to go through. Because I'm not very happy with a lot of the things that happened this year. But there were some good things too, but there was some damage done to my daughter, who already has damage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The fiscal year 25 Certified Budget public hearing is now officially closed. Ryan, have there been requests to address the board on other matters this evening?
Yes, we have one.
With one speaker this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Reesstrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. If you've submitted a request to address the board and choose to refrain from speaking, in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. To abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board directors and the public during this time except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speaker that the board cannot address personnel and student matters. The board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving those concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speaker to state her name and address when called to the podium. Ryan, please call our first speaker.
Mary Arenas, and she is speaking on behalf, or speaking on the topic of buildings and education for teachers and a raise for pares.
Mary Arenas, 3015 Kenridge Terrace Northeast Cedar Rapids, Iowa 52402. I have four children by birth, grew up by adoption, and was a foster parent for 20 years. So I have lots and lots and lots of kids going through all districts, the Cedar Rapids, Marion area, and college community. First of all, I would say pares. It used to be kind of a running joke in the Cedar Rapids School District that pares were the best bargain that they had, but it's not so funny anymore because we're having a hard time finding and keeping pares. Pares have to know almost as much as teachers do for the job that they do. Just Rebecca alone, she has a whole list of diagnoses that she needs to be familiar with and know the symptoms, the signs, the, lots of mental health stuff going on. And when I was a parent at Kennedy, I can do the alternative assessments. I just think those pares need to really, really, really get a big raise and be treated with more respect. I've called the governor's office and said that too, but I'm told that they give you the monies and it's up to you to allocate how your monies go. So I'm just begging for those pares. They work really hard, as hard as the teachers, and so, and give you a lot of the same responsibilities. And I would like to see them brought in more to more IEP meetings and learning days along with the teachers, please. Thank you. And then for education that I asked about for the district, for reactive attachment disorder, children of trauma. In the Cedar Rapids School District, there is approximately 500 children that are in the foster care system. Those kids have been through lots and lots of trauma. Trauma changes the way the kids' brains were developed for, like neglect, the abuse, the parent in prison, the malhealth status, the, so many things, yet your staff isn't really aware of it, and it needs to be looked at for any service for the trauma. Because there's, there's been several instances where it was not addressed correctly, that it should have been addressed differently. Trauma causes more trauma, like fights in the classroom for, let's see, children of trauma that have had lots of trauma. They should be taken out of the classroom or asked if they could talk about it, or if they can need a break, not to see it again to redo more trauma. Just education, I just really ask for education for your teachers and your pares on RAD, reactive attachment disorder and the trauma, because it's not, it's not getting addressed. And I don't feel that a parent needs to educate all year round, even up until a few weeks ago. These people have their master's degrees. I've even given a book to the head person in the school, and she didn't have time to read it. I bought that book, I read it, it was so good with Oprah Winfrey and Mr. Green, excuse me, Bruce Perry. But until the parents get the respect that they feel that would help, not just their particular child, but all children, and that you're told that you didn't have the time to read it, we got to start partnering with each other, and you and my baby are kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now give the meeting over to Dr. Grover so she can share her report.
Thank you, President Garlock. So let's start with the eclipse today. If you were able to get outside around 2 o'clock PM, hopefully you had a chance to witness it. I know that several of our schools, they had the opportunity to participate. Up on the screen, you see Taft Middle School. The science teachers, just hats off to them. They worked with students last week to learn about the eclipse. Today, they took the entire student body outside, and even with their eclipse glasses on, even the folks here at the ELSC, we had a chance to get outside as well. So if you missed it, the next sole event over in North America will be in 20 years, I'm told, so let's get prepared for it in 2044. Onto serious business at hand here in Cedar Rapids Community School District and across the state. The Iowa statewide assessment of student progress is a crucial accountability assessment for all of our Iowa students, meeting the requirements of the federal Every Student Succeeds Act. The ISAP testing schedule is taking place from April 3rd through the 21st and will be administered to all of our students' grades, 3 through 11. It's worth noting that students in K through 2 and seniors, they're not required to take the ISAP. The assessment will be conducted online, and secondary students, they must bring their school-issued device and power cord for testing. This is a little bit of a reminder. In grades 3 through 11, ISAP assesses reading, language, and writing, and math, while science is assessed in grades 5, 8, and 10. Assessment results will be available to schools and families. This information usually comes pretty quickly after the assessment, but sometimes it's all the way into the fall. But whenever we receive them, we will take the necessary steps to share it with our families. So we strongly urge our parents and guardians to check with their schools to verify the schedule in which students will be testing. Attendance on these days is extremely important, and we expect for every student to give their all. So thank you to all of the campuses who've been working very hard on the assessments. This is a part of our Cedar Rapids Community School District profile, where we have our individual school performance profiles as well as our district-wide. Okay, just an opportunity to remind our community as well as our staff member that we want to hear your voice, and so hopefully you've had a chance to take time to fill out our survey that is related to our facilities. It should have arrived in your mailbox last week or through the email system. As a district, we are committed to building trust and credibility with our community, and we're asking our families and community at large to share your inputs on our facilities as we help to shape the new plan for our district's future as it relates to facilities. As of April the 5th, we had 2,335 surveys completed. That's great, fantastic. So thank you to everyone that have.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really good. Yeah, people have to take their time and effort and be interested and involved, and so we really appreciate that. But we need a few thousand more, okay? We want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity. I really appreciate the board working alongside with School Perceptions and our team here to really just get to the heart of the matter, some very direct questions. So I filled mine out last week. So, and it looks kind of thick at first. When you look at it, it may feel a little bit intimidating, but there's some good information. But there are just a few questions there, and so you can answer some questions, and you can also provide extra detail. If you're like one that likes to give extra information, you can type it online, or you can write on the paper, and you can mail it back in. However you do it, we're looking forward to it. Just again, back to the trust and credibility part, all of your information is confidential. We don't receive the surveys. The surveys, they go back to School Perceptions. They will do all the analysis of the data, and we will have an opportunity to hear from our consultants during our May board meeting. So thank you to all the people that have completed the survey, and thank you in advance to everyone that's going to get that done by the end of the week. Okay, another opportunity to get involved, and this is a wonderful opportunity because everyone has a chance to participate in nominating Teachers of the Year across the state of Iowa. So if you know of a Cedar Rapids Community School District, and we have several that you can choose from, a lot of them, that have made a difference in your student's life, the Iowa Department of Education is now accepting nominations for the 2025 Iowa Teacher of the Year Award. And I thought that was really good, that any community member, any student, any parent, they have the opportunity to participate. You can make a nomination through April the 16th. If you go on our website, we have the link there, but you can just Google Iowa Teacher of the Year. It'll take you to the state's website as well. This year, they have nine semifinalists who will be selected from all of the nominations to receive the Regional Teacher of the Year, and then one teacher will be named 2025 Iowa Teacher of the Year. We love to see our Cedar Rapids teachers recognized in this endeavor. Speaking of an endeavor, thank you again to our Office of Academics and to our Board of Education and other helping hands that have joined in. Our CKLA curriculum has arrived. The first shipment arrived over at Maple Grove, and this has certainly been a group effort. We want to thank Stefan Frischkorn for cataloging the curriculum for the whole district. Now, that's what you call going above and beyond, right? So if you see him, know him, hey, give him a shout out. And so they received three pallets, you can kind of see that there, and 10 boxes of materials. You know, our goal for this work was to make sure that we put the curriculum in the hands of the teachers before the end of the school year. That's something that they asked us for. They did not want to wait until August to be able to receive their new materials. And so by the end of the month, we should have it in the hands of all of our teachers across the district. So thank you again to the Office of Academics and to the Purchasing Department for making this happen for our staff members. Lots of great things happening here. One last thing, I believe, well, two. This academic year marks the final one for Garfield Elementary. As we know, Garfield and Arthur, they will be combined, merging together for the new Trailside, but we have an opportunity to help celebrate Garfield. On May the 4th at 10 o'clock AM, they will be having their final open house. Let's go out and support them. May 4th, 10 o'clock AM. Okay, and the last day of school reminder, we've had to kind of adjust a little bit as Mother Nature continues to adjust. Is it all gone, y'all? Is all the snow gone? We hope so. Right now, as it stands today, the last day of school is Thursday, June the 6th, and so we will have this missile starting at 1:20 PM for our high school students and 2:20 for our elementary students. And the last day for our little preschool students will be Wednesday, June the 5th, and the last day for teachers, June the 7th. So that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. We have a couple board reports tonight, one from our Recruitment and Retention Core Operational Committee, and Director Borcheting would like to update us on that.
Thank you, President Garlock. I'm going to start by saying that I seem to be having a little tickle in my throat, so I might just pass these papers down to Mercy. Sorry, Mercy. So, so far, we've had two meetings. Both have been focused on human resources and diversity, equity, and inclusion. The philosophy this year has been that the best retention tool is strong retention. HR has been focused on trying to improve the quality of life of our current employees. As we continue to energize our staff, word will spread, and we plan to add nearly 2,700 recruiters and testimonials. So far, I've had the opportunity to help evaluate the steps we have taken to both quantify and improve the level of engagement for our staff. There are now tools in place to measure retention and engagement levels. There is a team dedicated to looking at patterns of work-related injuries to increase prevention and help individuals after an injury is sustained. Feedback is key. There's a group called the President's Board that meets to represent all of our work groups so decisions can be made with the staff voice in mind. Topics have included professional learning, efficacy, and how to better handle absences in buildings and across the district. There's also a task force for onboarding and orientation, so it is expedient and informative in the best ways. We want well-informed staff that identify with our core values, and we want to empower them in their roles right away. There is a desire to focus on the term employa, employ, it's loyalty, but it's employality? Employality? Which speaks, employ, okay, which speaks to engagement and happiness associated with working for the organization. There is also an increased desire to explore perks for our staff members. These perks combine with our salary and benefits to make a complete package of how we compensate our employees. We desire to also have a workforce that is reflective of the population we serve. Human Resources houses our district's diversity, equity, and inclusion team. The district team has been working tirelessly to create places for all staff to have a sense of belonging. In that vein, the DEI team has three affinity groups with a focus on supporting staff members who identify as Black and African-American, LGBTQIA+ and new-to-the-profession teachers, with the hopes to add more in the coming years. DEI has been building a calendar to celebrate and raise awareness about our differences throughout the year. Lastly, they are working to develop a process to measure through an inclusive lens how to more positively impact our larger system from our offices in the ELSC. Through these steps, we will certainly engage our staff more deeply and in turn increase retention and increase staff efficacy as well. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Director Borcheting. We also tonight have a report from our Academics and Achievement Committee, and Director Newman will be presenting that.
Thank you, President Garlock. I attended the Academics and Achievement Core Operational Committee. That was on March 28th, and we discussed the CKLA rollout and its implementation in 22 elementary schools. Nicole Brown shared that that initial distribution of materials was at Maple Grove, and you saw the photos that Dr. Grover shared, and it had a dedicated team to organize and sort the materials efficiently. That team will continue to work through challenges at Maple Grove as we figure out how this is going to roll out and develop a comprehensive plan that will ensure a smooth rollout for the remaining 21 schools. We really want to extend a special thank you to the staff at Maple Grove, Michelle Cruz, Carissa Jenkins, for exceptional efforts toward this big project. So big lift, as you saw the pallets, literally a big lift. We also talked a little bit about community partners. Chris Gibson shared some information about that and data points from those community partners. This is an ongoing discussion of the committee. That's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Director Newman. Do we have any other board reports? Okay, let's move on to our revised consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate Do we have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Rountri.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
And President Garlock.
Aye. Is there a motion to enter the work session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are going to take an eight-minute recess while we set up for the work session, so see you all in eight minutes.
See you.
Okay, I didn't get much.
Um, I am excited about industry partners.
Oh, yes.
And I, my questions are on what industry certifications? And I want that, I want a deeper understanding of the difference between an academy and a pathway. What about you?
Yeah, so I am excited about the industry innovative.
Does that kind of just sum it up for me?
Yeah.
Idea of.
So questions provoked.
Um.
Next section is like, how do we choose the certain pathways for your school?
Um.
Yeah.
Are they based on how.
Yeah, what's included and what's not, right? So back to that point of like, it's incomprehensive, you know, like how old is I?
Yeah.
Those types of things, then also, um, I'm curious, something I've been hearing. I'm not saying.
So I think that, um, so I, I attended.
And everyone was.
Okay, is this. Um, I don't.
What you?
It's, um, the, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think the way that, that anything we can. And that's probably something that, that we should have.
So if you want to wrap up your conversations, we'll bring you back. It's my timer. All right, let's just go around the horn. Whoever wants to start. One thing you were excited about, and then one or two things that, questions that you, um, had.
Um, excited, I like the progression of the, of the path for students. I like that we started, we had all levels of students in there. Um, and then my, the question it raised for me is, who is the audience? Who is this intended for and have we, or intended for? And have we thought about whether it's effective for that audience yet?
Thank you.
I like that they are preparing, I like within the video, preparing for real world experiences. I think that's really key. That's what we're looking for, to prepare our students.
Thank you.
Is it me?
Good. I got it pointed.
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think, uh, we were kind of discussing Cindy and I, the community link with the school. You know, we really love that we're really connecting these students with their interests and the local community, um, kind of building out those new skillsets. And, uh, some of the, you know, question I've had is, um, as we're thinking about rolling out these pathways at each of the schools, how are we, um, providing transportation if students are interested in a certain track that is not at their current school? You know, kind of what is, what does that look like? How do we navigate that?
Thank you.
The only thing I have to add to that is, I think some of the questions, uh, surrounding this have to do with logistics of, how do we get kids the right place at the right time? Do we have staff to cover these new pathways? Just some of the logistical things.
Thank you.
Did you want it?
Oh, no, no.
We're skipping. I just always wanted.
Yeah.
I would say the, the public-private partnership, um, you know, seeing that, I get celebrated. Sorry, did I steal yours? Oh, I thought you.
Uh-uh.
Yeah, there's such a tremendous opportunity there, so it's, it's nice to see us focusing on the community engagement piece.
Thank you.
Well, I am excited about the intentional, innovative. What is that right now? The necessary innovative, intentional changes. I am so excited because even watching this video just gives me so much hope because I know that the work, um, behind this video is great vision. And things are going to happen for our students and engage our staff in such a way that it's going to be so amazing. Um, it's innovative, it's exciting, it's intentional, and it's the change that we need in this district. So I am excited. Y'all know y'all want to clap, go ahead and do that. That is, so I'm super excited, super, super, super excited. Very proud of the work that is happening here among the, uh, superintendent and the executive cabinet. The question I have is, what is the structure of expectation of our industry partners? Right? And what do we have in place to ensure that they will bring quality to our programs and make sure that they are partnering? So, you know, the, in my mind is, what, what is the structure? So, meaning, I, and I believe that this team will put something together really good, but, you know, I, I don't want it to be strenuous, but really serious, like we're not playing. You have to be of a certain caliber to engage, right? So that was my question. What structure do you have in place to ensure those things?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, um, so I was excited about the inclusion of business and industry partners. I think that's vital. We are a community school district. They are incredibly important to our community. Our students are members of our community, and I think that, you know, providing them with a way to graduate into the workforce locally is a tremendous benefit. Also, I was excited about the music, so kudos to whoever made that. It was very, um, it reminded me of, uh, soaring in Epcot, like that kind of soaring music. So I really want you to tell me, like, only if it's true, but I really want you to tell me that, like, somebody in Cedar Rapids made the music, because that was really good music.
Justin Schaefer.
Woo, Justin Schaefer, nice job.
And he was the voice.
Wow, all right. That was good. Um, and then I, I, the questions I had were, I had mentioned industry certifications, so I'm wondering what industry certifications those are. I think it would be helpful to have a deeper understanding in the video of the difference between an academy and a pathway, and then what items determine inclusion of a focus? Is it wage? Is it employability? What does that look like long-term?
Thank you. So we're going to get to some of these questions, and we're going to take those questions and make sure we get to all of them in future presentations. But this is transformative work, and it's all in line with our district vision of every learner future ready. And so this is a vehicle that we'll get there with. The work really is set out to operationalize the mission statement that we've had. A plan, path, path, pathway, and passion for every student, and we think this plan will get us there. So tonight, we're talking about something we haven't connected previously or explicitly. I've been part of that conversation at the board table, but we're talking about pillar one, which is plans, passions, and pathways, but then connected to our facilities explicitly. And so I'm going to talk about the programming side of it, and then Chad is going to talk about, uh, the facilities part. But these two strategies go hand in hand and must to support one another. All of the work is really focused around goal number four, raising our graduation rates by 10 points and making sure that all of our graduates leave with something more, college credit, industry-recognized credential. So as I said, this is a four-year journey, um, that we're outlining here. This year has really been about program design and making sure that we are casting that big vision around what every graduate should leave with. And so tonight, you're going to see the portrait that articulates that in very concrete, measurable, um, language. And then you're going to get into a continuum of experiences we're going to guarantee. And then we'll, we'll at a later date get into the, um, professional skills that we're going to focus on. And next year, it's all going to be about learning, staff learning and making sure that they're ready in 25, 26 to launch freshman academies. And that'll be experienced across all three of our comprehensives and metro and city view. And then finally, in 26, 27, uh, we will be launching our upper academies where kids will start to engage on the pathways with a career focus. You'll see parallel, there's a whole facilities track that has to play along with this as well. So, three big parts, the promise, we'll look briefly, um, at the, the, um, portrait, a new portrait, I should say, and the continuum of experiences. We'll get into the question around pathways and academy, what's the difference? And leave a clear understanding there. And then finally, I'll talk about the process of how we're selecting the content and theme of each pathway. Any questions there? Okay. Then I'll hand it over, and we'll talk about how all that transformation is going to lead to a facilities conversation to support that programming. Okay, so if you go to page five in your booklet, that I see some of you moving to now, in front of you, you're going to see, um, probably the 12th draft of this document that we hope to finalize this spring. But the big purpose of this document is to, two things. It's a promise to the community, every student will leave Cedar Rapids as measured by these skills. And then it's also a measuring stick to say, how are we doing? And are we accountable for making sure that every student gets there? So we moved away from the five Cs of the old to a much more measurable portrait that we think will allow us, um, to actually track and measure kids' progress towards that. On the next page, you're going to see the continuum of, of experiences. The continuum, um, we've been getting feedback on as well, hundreds of voices have weighed in on this. This is page six of your booklet in front of you. It's a three-stage process that will consider elementary students, middle school students, and high school students. But really, it's, in elementary, what do all kids need to be exposed to? In middle school, what opportunities can we make sure that they explore? And then finally, in high school, what are they going to engage in that we can guarantee? Both of these documents have been examined, relooked at, um, across a number of venues. Like I said, hundreds of voices have weighed in. We're now in the process of all high school staff weighing into this, and so we'll finalize with all that feedback this spring. Same two guiding questions. As you consider those two documents, what are you excited about, either conceptually or specifically? And then what questions were provoked, uh, when looking at those two documents on page five and six?
Adam?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the print is too small for us to be able to read it, so I don't really know if we're going to be able to provide some feedback.
That's why.
Both, but it.
I'm sorry, in the, hand, uh, the information guide, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I hope that's not too small.
Oh. I can see this one very well, thank you.
Yep, of course. So I'll put two minutes, and then we'll do the same as we did before. We'll have you talk to a partner in the show. Absolutely. Both. We're talking about both. Two guiding questions, what are you excited about in these documents? Either conceptually or specifically? And then what questions arise when looking at these?
I don't know specifically what's on there, but I'll do my best.
Okay.
So, what, looking at that, you go first and we'll.
Well, I think one of the most exciting things is that we're, like, guaranteeing that our kids come out of high school with something beyond just the diploma. They're either going to have AP credit, college credit, or some sort of certification, which I think is a, a big promise to our community and to our families, so.
It does have a path, what, let's know. There's a pathway, let's know. Great, but I like that, it's broken down by grades.
Did you say anything about, um?
Um, I have lots of questions at the moment. I'm excited about us really delivering on, um, the career part. I think we've been super focused on college, college.
Yeah, so I'm seeing it in that document, right? So I mean, all that stuff is sort of at the foundation, and it looks like visually it's going to be at the foundation, which makes perfect sense.
How we're involving teachers in these conversations, they're going to be involved in this, I guess. I think it's just a critical component to, I mean, creating teachers into the conversation throughout. If they'll update disconnect, I would say, um, from the audience to the role of.
What are you excited about?
Yeah, yeah, I think that day, the way in Washington, when they rolled it out.
All of it.
You know, that was like their first really.
But I do want to.
Girl exposure to it, so yeah, a lot of feedback. And I, I think it's clear that this is still a work in progress.
Which I know that that is a part of.
Still collecting feedback.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Did you get a little whim when you think like, you keep going through the area, like, how do you think that?
All right, I will bring you back.
It builds, right? So I feel like that's an, like, this is easy, this is like, if you're going to look at all the things.
Same thing. Let's just go around the horn, things that you're excited about, um, and questions that this might have provoked.
I'm excited about, there is a plan in place for, I mean, the progression. I like that. My question though is, how do we get the buy-in for the programming? But I do like the way that it's laid out.
Thank you.
Thinking about it from a parent's perspective, if I've got a, a elementary student, maybe starting kindergarten, this is impressive when you look at it all laid out like that. That looks like there's a plan. It doesn't look like we're just starting school and we're not really sure what's going to happen here. So I really like that. I think that not only is it, even just here, pretty easy to understand, but I'm sure that more information will be behind all of these things, so. And it does represent a change in how we're currently doing things, so I'm excited about that. On the portrait of the graduate thing, fits on a T-shirt. Like that, so. Yep. And I have the same questions, like, how do we communicate this in a way that, um, helps parents get excited about it and helps our staff really rally behind this? And, you know, how do we build the, build and afford the facilities to do this in? Because this will, this takes space.
It does. Thank you.
Kaylin? You're up.
Yeah, um, I know, uh, I'll let you speak on, kind of Cindy, what we were, we were chatting about, um, just that, you know, that they are equipped and ready for, um, lots of different scenarios. I would say also, um, I get really excited about, again, that community, that, that piece of how we're getting kids connected in that way and that extracurricular. And then, you know, a question I had still is, we've been talking a lot about this, these skills that we want all of our students to have, adaptability, empathy, global mindset, this curiosity, critical thinking piece. I, um, I'd love to see how we can tie that in a little bit more and, you know, how are we harnessing these skillsets in each of the, um, sections of this plan? And, you know, even when we're talking about industry by industry, um, just how we're, how are we tying these executive function-type skills to ensure we have students that, you know, are action-oriented and, and all the things that we, that we talk about on repeat? So I'm sure that's a piece of it, but I'd love to see it somewhere reflected.
Thank you.
Um, I'm excited about the fact that we are making a promise to our families, to our students, that they will come out of high school with something more than just a diploma. We're being very public and very intentional about that, and, um, I'm confident that we can live up to that expectation, but I'm, I'm really pleased to see how clear that we are about that goal. I, I think my questions sort of revolve around the communication piece. This is a big change in how do we bring our families on board? How do we bring our staff on board, our students, so that they unders, understand this shift and why it's important?
Thank you.
Another thing I'll piggyback on, Director Newman, I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, one of these documents definitely articulates that it starts in elementary school. I think out in the community, people want to know how this is going to impact their families, um, their kids, and how that's going to apply. I also appreciate there is community engagement all the way through it, right? So even in elementary school, you're seeing where you've got career speakers coming in. I think that's, that's important. It's a good place for, uh, for the community to know where they can plug in. It's interesting because, um, it, it, it almost has to be both, right? I think it has to be simple to process, simple to be able to communicate, but it also has to be comprehensive. I think we get questions on both sides of that, right? That's too much information, I, you know, I'm not ready for that. There's a way for you to get, I think, that, that bite size, um, just to, to make sure that you feel like Cedar Rapids as a school district is on the right path. And then if you really want detailed answers to questions, I think this is certainly a start. There's probably even more, um, that needs to go into being fully comprehensive, but to not overwhelm somebody, I think, is, is definitely important.
Thank you.
You're taking notes, are you ready?
Always.
There's a recording.
That's right.
That's true. I am excited that, that, uh, there has been community involvement since the very beginning. I've been to a couple of these meetings, the career, um, and college preparation meetings that have been attended by, um, a hundred people approximately, maybe a little bit more, that are community leaders, but that are also teachers, administrators. I think I saw just a couple of students in there, some parents. So I like that there's that plurality of voice that's, that's even going into the framework that's gotten us this far. And I'm excited to see that continuing throughout this focus. I'm excited we're delivering on the career part. I think that this district has been very successfully focused on college. And we've done some towards career, but I, I like that we are being, um, really focused on that moving forward. I like the biliteracy seal. As I said before, we are, we are a community school district, but I think we're also members of a world community, and I like that we are, uh, making an intentional effort to graduate global citizens. And then I think, you know, like everybody on this board, you know, we kind of all volunteers tribute, volunteers tribute. So the community service part was really exciting for me, um, just because that is something that I personally hold, um, to be of value. My questions are, I just wonder if the certifications are stackable or transferable? I know that, like, for, for teaching, for example, the, the requirements are different state by state, so just want to make sure that we're building a base that, that carries people if they are going to leave our state that will also benefit them someplace else. And then I'm just not sure what the capstone project is.
Thank you.
All right, so what I am excited about is reading all of this, um, on this so beautifully illustrated paper. What I'm excited about is, because I know it's going to happen, because I know that there's a team that is driving this initiative for our community and our district that is working very hard and intently, and it's going to happen. Oftentimes, things go on paper, but then nothing ever becomes of it, right? And all of this really, um, really matches well with our, uh, our plan, our strategic plan, and it's consistent. So that is what I'm excited about. I love what I see, and I agree with everything that's been said from all the other directors, which is wonderful. I see also that we really do have a great focus on college, going to college. And I see that, of course, that's what the CTE thing is all about as well. But I would like to see more of a magnifier on, um, the trades as well. I feel like the college is really magnified and the career is involved as well. But I think about, um, when I first look at it, I think, like, excited about going to college, you know? And so I think just the public, how they would, that might be something that may come up. Even though it's right in front of you, somebody's going to say, well, what about the trades? So just a little more magnifier on that.
Yep, thank you. And these are all drafts, I should say, um, as we're getting closer and honing in on, um, some of our pathways. This is still in draft form, the two documents, we're still drafting it, um, so the input's really good. Striking that balance between career and college has been something that we've gone back and forth with different levels of feedback, and so we'll try to strike the right tone going forward. Okay, and so one of the questions that you surfaced, um, someone surfaced, I think a couple of people did, was what is the difference between a pathway and an academy? And how are we communicating that difference? So as we think about the two models that we're settling in on, there are two school models that we are moving towards, the academy model and the pathway model. Both are driven by a single set of research, which is the career and technical education research. It says, very simply, if you connect kids to their passions and a career field that they can experiment in, get involved with, they'll do better on certain indicators, namely, graduation, graduation rates, future career earnings, um, their engagement in school. So what we did is we said, okay, if that's the broad model, um, that's what all of our high schools will be engaged in. And then there's a second body of research, which two, um, of our high schools will be really focused on, which is the academy model. And the academy model is highlighted here, and this is on page two of your booklet, if you want to follow along with the actual text, has three core elements, and this is where we'll start. Small learning communities, college prep curriculum, and partnerships with employers. And so the research says, if you get groups of kids together with groups of teachers that are directly accountable for those kids and an administrator who is directly accountable for those teachers, and align all of that, kids do better because they belong, they feel like they have a purpose, and they have a community that they can engage in. So that is what the, the fundamentals of the academy are. So in two of our schools, Jefferson and Washington, they'll be in the academy model currently. And so there's a framework here that I hope is illustrative, and if, I'll, I'll take feedback on that too. But if you look here, all of our students will engage in a freshman academy. And that is really their home as they get into that high school transition. And then in these two schools, they'll transition after their freshman year, and they'll pick, um, an academy they want to be engaged with. And so if you think about an academy in a university, that's your college. And within that academy, they'll, they'll then pick a pathway that they want to go focus on and get the career experiences and start to develop those skillsets and credentials in. They'll still get art, music, those will be global classes that are available to everyone, those offerings won't be limited. The second model, which will be at Kennedy currently, um, is the pathways model. The pathways model, everyone will still be engaged in that small learning community their freshman year in that transition, and then they'll select a career focus that they'll take three consecutive years. So that model is illustrated here. Everyone will be in that freshman, which will be all the same. Everyone will have access to the extracurriculars currently. The difference in the two models is, in those upper academies, 10th through 12th grade, where are we putting those small learning communities? Washington Jeff will have one, Kennedy will have another. So, that was a little quicker than the last one. It's me, do you take a couple of minutes with your shoulder partner? What questions do you have? What are you excited about? And all this information is on pages two through four in your, uh, information guide as well.
Okay, it just doesn't look the same, got it.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Please, yep.
Sure.
What are you excited about?
I feel like, um, what are you excited about?
I mean, just more of the same. We're still talking about the same thing, so.
Those freshman academies especially, to help kids.
Are you excited about something different at this point?
Um, so those smaller groups, I think there's more accountability when you.
Yeah, I don't either.
You know, I think that we're, um. I'm excited that we are responsible to the current situation and that we're, that we're providing opportunities as opposed to being reactive and being a lot of, providing opportunities and.
Okay.
Okay.
What, what questions do you have?
I'm still excited. Still excited about all of it. Questions I have is, what is... What is the plan? Okay, so, this is the plan to roll it out. But how does we... How does it measure, I mean, uh, rollout?
How hard will it be to switch?
Was phase one, phase two? So that, and so all of it looks good and sounds good, but what is the rollout plan that... Okay, so we started at twenty-four, twenty-five?
Like, which, which academies, we started at high school?
Oh, like this one?
I disagree, it's a great question.
What he does about twenty-five?
It's a plan.
He said something about twenty-five.
Yeah, so, yeah, those, there are different, yeah.
So I just kind of need an outline of that, where's the, so we can have something to measure.
Well, I think just... Um, I mean, I guess it's like more attendance and graduation rates, but I mean, I think that they need to...
That's a, that's a big shift.
But, I mean, is that, in a line of what is being taught, is that...
Well, I think that there's a couple of different dots, right? Because that would be measurable, so, you know, it would be, how, you know, because then we'll have... And then how would it affect the kids that are graduating next, not, not next month, but...
All right, I'll bring you back.
It'd only roll out to freshmen, so we won't know.
All right.
Already there?
Yeah, it would be great.
Well, it doesn't talk about the role.
I will let whoever wants to start, start. Things you're excited about, questions you have.
I'm still excited.
Please stay there.
My, my excitement hasn't dwindled because we changed, uh, pages, I'm still excited.
I, I'm excited that there will perhaps be more accountability, both by students and teachers, when they're in smaller groups. It just seems like when you have a small group of people that you are responsible for, it's, you're just more accountable for them. So I think that, that's, uh, something to be excited about.
And I agree with that, I look at the, the academies, how, I take it that the groups are smaller, they're, they stay together. And I, I like that piece.
Thank you.
I didn't, is it time to ask the question?
Yeah, please.
Oh, okay. Um, so the rollout. Right, I did hear you say freshmen's, it would start among freshmen's first, right? Um, and then, so, just kind of an outline of the rollout, so who's next, what, you know, what, I mean, because it's all sound really good. I'm just not real clear about how it's gonna be implemented. And then after, um, it does roll out, what is, is there a, a structure of data in place where we can kind of measure the success of what we've already done?
Thank you.
My, my question is, what happens if they, what if change their pathways? What is the process, and how do you keep them moving forward?
For, like, enrollment?
Yeah, if, yeah, if they change, if they say, oh, I'm in this, I don't like it, I want something, something else.
Well, the, right, the idea that once you're on a path, that you learned something, you're like, I actually don't love that as much as I thought I did. How do I turn back? And just making sure that people don't feel like they have to, you know, go pretty far back and starting over, um, that there's a way to kind of navigate through that. And I would comment, I, I think I do appreciate the fact that there are two different models here. So families that are looking for maybe a more, more traditional, um, schooling, maybe they can find that in, in one of the models versus the other. That also paired with the rollout, which is the consistency of why is there one model here and another model in these other places? And also just having older students of knowing that, of course, they care what they're learning, um, they do care who they're learning it with. So to know if they choose an academy and it's not maybe with what they consider their peer group and their friends, like, how do they, how do we make sure that they still benefit from that larger group? And I'm always looking for the best of both worlds. Um, as a person that likes change, I get excited about that, but as a person that knows that not everybody likes change, um, that could be terrifying for some people. So the communication of what that change is going to be and how it's going to impact them, um, I think will be really important for us to figure out.
Absolutely.
Um, I am excited that we are taking steps to be proactive instead of being reactive. Um, that we're really taking some time to evaluate what the academic system looks like and what academics look like across the nation, and being proactive and developing a plan to kind of harness the energy that's there, instead of being reactive, um, to not having supplied it in the first place. My questions are, um, around some equity issues. I just want to know if all focus areas will be available at all high schools? And if not, what are the plans for transportation?
Thank you.
Um, I, Cindy and I kind of, yeah, we talked about kind of all the things we already shared. Another piece is just, you know, again, I, I really do like that, that you're kind of grouped with people with similar interests. So you kind of have this, um, you know, this group of people that are like-minded, you can fall back on, and you can kind of learn from each other in that way in a small, smaller group. Um, so, uh, that's kind of where our conversation was centered, um, but definitely can see the other sides of that. Uh, just a wonder I have, um, you know, I think it would be great to see if there's students that can be advocates for the CTE classes. Um, obviously, we're not creating something brand new, this does exist. So if we can tap into some of the other success stories from maybe students across the Midwest, maybe in towns, similar demographics, whatever that might look like, Cedar Rapids. But as we're, you know, just getting this out to the community, the, the parents, um, let's, let's try to showcase that and, uh, let the students tell the story, instead of us trying to be convincing in somewhere of the board or the district or principals. You know, I love the idea of just empowering those students to be the advocates, um, because, you know, also knowing we've modeled it after other programs across the country. And this is the way of the future, future ready, you know, it brings it all full circle. So kind of just a wonder there, um, for the future.
Absolutely, thank you. I should say, these are great questions. We are developing a design team, um, that'll come together, it's made up of our central office leaders, but also campus leaders as well. Um, it'll start with principals and then filter into teacher leaders to start to design the procedures to answer these questions. Um, some of them will have to be answered by us, transportation, how are we gonna do that? Um, but when we think about the procedures on activities, um, there are people that are experts in the building, so we'll rely on them to develop a really detailed procedures manual, so we have clear answers, um, as we engage in these changes.
Adam, I just want to say something really quick on that. I do think that we should also, at whatever point, engage our families, our parents, like, getting a, a group to react to our responses, so we know that we're putting the right policies and processes in place, uh, for our families.
Thank you.
I think my, my only question on this is, how are you going to make these differences crystal clear? We're all pretty close to it, and I'm completely confused even after getting clarification. So I think that if we feel confused, the public will certainly feel confused, and we need to make sure that we distill that down to the simplest of messaging, so that they understand the difference between pathways and academies, because even on paper, it really looks pretty similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, kind of based on what directorium, and I just have a wonder about, why aren't they all academies? Like, why did, why is there a pathway at, at one?
Yep, and so the very simple answer to that is, we looked at the data and said, okay, we know career, career-focused education is good for all, right? And so the data is across all, um, but are, there are differences in the data we're seeing across our three high schools. Um, so I'll pass this out. So it, it's a pretty simple methodology...
Thank you.
Of how we got here.
Thank you.
First question is, what are the impacts of college and career-connected learning? And there's really solid research to suggest that graduation rates go up, dropout rates go down, attendance goes up, behavior and belongings improved, and future career earnings. What are the schools' support structures, or what are the school structures that can amplify that? The comprehensive setting, we, we know that works, and research suggests that it, career, college and career-connected learning works in comprehensive settings. You can double down in the academy settings. So all academies are, are small, dividing a big school up into small parts, where they can feel like they belong and have a small community. That amplifies the effects. And said, okay, if those are the two possible models, then what are the, what's the data tell us about our current state and what that should look like? So if you go down to the data, you can see there are clear differences, um, in terms of graduation rates, attendance, conditions for learning. And so that's how we got to the two different places in terms of model.
The comprehensive setting isn't the pathway model, right? This is just showing this against academies. This is traditional, right? Comprehensive setting is traditional, and then we're showing academies, but we're not really showing pathways, and why that's a better option for some schools.
So that would be the comprehensive with pathways in it?
Comprehensive with...
With pathways. Yep.
Right. But we're not showing pathways on here as a, that still just doesn't answer the question of why do we have these two different models?
Sorry, no, this does. So, I mean, I should say, it's intended to. The comprehensive setting with pathways, so when you have classes that connect, and it really is, what are you taking as electives? So when you have sequenced classes over time in a comprehensive setting, that doesn't break the school into smaller academies, they have a positive effect. When you come over to the academies, that's breaking the school into smaller settings, and they have an amplified effect.
And I think it's kind of back to our portrait of a graduate. We want to be able to offer all students, um, in the district, the opportunity, uh, for college credit and industry certifications. And so when we think about the pathway models, that's what's allowing them to have these experiences, uh, where they may not be down into the smaller learning communities, but they still have access, right? So that's what we want to be alike across our system. And so there's, you know, there are two ways, uh, that we try to think about this. We want to be, um, data-informed and values-driven. The other part of the reason why we're okay, uh, certainly we can continue to take feedback from the board, with one of our high schools being different, is that we want choice for our families within Cedar Rapids Community School District. So it's not about all of our high schools being the same, it's about what do we offer in Cedar Rapids Community School District? There are some families that they're gonna want to continue to have a liberal arts education. We've already heard that they're gonna want that traditional path. We don't want them to opt out of Cedar Rapids because we don't have that. They can go up the street and get, you know, that, but we want them to know that they still have that opportunity here. Um, and as we talked about earlier, we'll continue to, uh, work on the processes for our kids to be able to choose within Cedar Rapids. I, I think that's our overall goal, and, and we're pretty proud that we will have those differences.
So we'll allow families to choose where their child goes to school based on the program they want?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're working through all the logistics of that. And it, it can be, it can definitely be complicated, but we're, we're here for it. Um, and so we're gonna, that's why that team is important. What is the process? We're talking about everything, like, do I want to take one class? Do I want to do my school day there, but I want to do my sports somewhere else? And so we're talking about school for the future, and people want adaptability, they want choice, uh, they want to be innovative, uh, they want personalized attention, and that's what we're trying to design a system that will allow for that.
So the last piece, as we talk about process, um, the process that we are going through and have been going through, um, to really nail down what the content of those pathways are. So we started with three criteria: high wage, high scale, and in-demand. And we started, um, looking at local workforce data, focus groups, career, our career information system, where kids are matched with career sets, where are kids interested now? Um, then we talked to business leaders, um, in the community to say, what are your highest need areas now? Um, so we looked at that data, and we looked at our current facilities to say, where are our teachers in terms of credentials? What do our actual physical facilities look like? What's programs look like? Um, and we started to try to work through this puzzle, um, and we put a draft down on paper, which is what you saw today. Then on March first, we launched that with our high schools to get the first round of feedback, um, and saying, this is the beginning. Um, and I think that it really truly is the, was the beginning. Um, so now we're collecting feedback, and they're hosting, um, and having staff meetings to go say, okay, if this, we want these to be authentic to the community that they're serving with community partners that are in those areas, um, and what are their differentiators that they can lean into? Um, so they're going through those conversations now, um, and we're gonna get a final recommendation back from them, um, them being the school settings of, what do they want their pathways and academies to be? And then we'll put that together, we'll then go back to the business and industry leaders, community leaders, and say, are there needs? What are we missing here, a final run? Um, and are they in support? Um, and then we'll determine what those, those pathways are. That'll all happen this spring still, um, with June third being our date, and we're trying to get those pathways solidified. Questions here?
I just have a question there about, um, I, I, first of all, I very much appreciate that, that this is based on high wage, high skill, and in-demand. Um, I, I, my question is, do you have, um, are you working with somebody who's a visionary or a futurist? That if, I mean, if we're talking about building long-term career steadiness, I mean, there's stuff happening in industries that we haven't even thought of yet. So I, I'm wondering if you're consulting some research or with a visionary or a futurist that kind of has an indication of the way that different lines of business are gonna be evolving?
Yeah, we, and you've been in the media, we're working with the business community here. Um, if you have suggestions on who to add to that group, or someone to tap on the shoulder and say, hey, take a look, we'd love that feedback as well, and input.
Has there been any, um, and I, I think Kirkwood's been at the table. I'm wondering if any of the higher education people that are kind of focused in that area, if they've also been contributing?
Yeah, they've been amazing. All of our regions have been involved, they're very excited, we're excited to have them on board. Kirkwood has been with us from the beginning, local colleges as well. Um, so they're, they're right at the table, and we're excited to see what we can do with a more integrated program, um, across all of those opportunities.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, um, my last slide, and I'll hand it over to Chad. And you've highlighted most of these, but I wanted to be really transparent in terms of where we are with anticipated challenges. Program development and partnership development, we're gonna work on this, we have a plan to go integrate these programs, to get them set up. June third will be a big date for us to have the, the topics that we can then go build program around, but that'll be a lift. Um, and so someone talked about, Marty, I think you talked about partnerships, and making them real, right? And, and really have some integrity to them. We're gonna ask partners to come to the table in a different kind of way, um, and put up resources, time, people, and they're really excited to do that, but that's gonna take time. And so all of these pieces will have to fit together, that's the first anticipated challenge. Second, facilities, and we're gonna get into that today. And as you can see just from the structures, our buildings, if split into four different academies, have to look and feel different. And that's an investment, and we're gonna talk about how that intersects, um, tonight. And then the third kind of goes across the, the two others, but it's just a status quo, uh, and the mindset. This is transformation, we're changing the structure, some of the content of our schools, um, and it, it's gonna take a minute to get everyone on board. Um, and so we're gonna need lots of support, um, in, in coming to the table to say, this is where we are, um, and bringing people along with us, um, as we enter this journey. Final questions, thoughts for me? Okay.
I just want to thank you for this work, and everyone on the team that's working on it, and the leadership of Dr. Grover. I mean, I think that this is something that we've, as a board, we've been talking about enhancing CTE programming for the six years that I've been on the board. So, um, it's nice to see some action. So thank you.
Okay, well, in, for this part, where I started, um, with that timeline. So as we think about this year, on the programming side, we're designing in terms of what it could look like for facilities. Next year will be a learning year for us, so what does that look like on the facility side? And the same can be said for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, or twenty-six, twenty-seven. This is gonna take a lift, especially when we get into the freshman academy launch in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven. The facilities are gonna have to match the program. And if we're saying the benefits of a small community in a school are significant, then how are we creating the physical space to enable that small community? If we want co- kids to have career-focused classes, those classes need to have spaces that can actually provide those opportunities. So Chad's gonna talk to you a little bit about the plan to move forward here, um, but I appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you.
I'm not sure exactly when Adam and I crossed paths, when I got hired in October, but when we did, I was like, oh, twenty-five, twenty-six? Are you serious? Um, so we've been pushing and pulling on each other for the last, uh, two months or so, um, and really, really looking at, how can we transform education? Not just from a programming standpoint, from a, from a facility standpoint as well. This is transformational work. This is changing how we look at education, and it's building our kids for the future, and giving them opportunities that will launch them into their, into their adult life. Adam's team, I kind of look at them as like a, a coaching staff. Adam's team, I kind of look at them as like a coaching staff. They're putting together a game plan of how this is all going to go. And they're going to ask that we go out as their team and implement that game plan. And as I think about great coaching, I thought about the game yesterday and Iowa versus, or South Carolina. And I'm actually going to focus on South Carolina because they lost one game in two years. So she's probably got a pretty good game plan of what she was doing on the court. However, she knew that she needed people to shoot from the perimeter and guard from the perimeter. That was their one weak spot that they needed to solidify. So she went out and she recruited two freshmen, young ladies, and she also got in the transfer portal a senior that came. And all three of them were able to shoot and guard from the perimeter. And so when I think about what Adam's team is putting together, I feel like we're like one piece of the puzzle short to make sure we can hit '25 and '26 as my heart palpitates. But it's important to understand that that's a dedication and a goal that we have because we also know that we can't launch something this transformational without having the facilities that are going to support it. It's so vital to the success of this program. So when we look at making sure that we can kind of build that plane as it flies and bring along the facilities while they're developing this programming, we wanted to engage with somebody who is going to bring an expertise to the table. And so we engaged with Larson Construction on that. Larson Construction was founded by Ed and Janet Larson after Ed decided to leave his industrial tech education career at Independence and start a construction firm. And so from the very beginning, 30, 40 years ago, Ed left his education career and started a construction firm. They not only have been building K-12 buildings for the last 40 years, they've also have three other manufacturing companies in Independence. One that builds, takes raw steel and manufactures steel with welders and other manufacturers. One that builds or creates and manufactures large radiators for large construction vehicles. And one that works all over the world selling deburring machines with basically a company that creates a piece of metal and then they take it into this deburring machine and get rid of all the sharp edges. So they know the need and the wants for good manufacturing individuals. They know that this can be transformative work for our kids and also giving kids the opportunity to have a career that is high wage, high demand, and it allows them to have a successful life. So I'm excited about the opportunity to bring on Larson Construction as a partner in this work because it is a heavy lift of what they're doing, but it's also going to be a heavy lift for us to be ready in '25 for the freshman academy. And so I'm going to hand it over to Travis to have him talk about how Larson Construction is the right choice for us in Cedar Rapids Community School District.
Okay, thanks Chad. So what I'd ask everyone to do is we have a presentation and you have a brochure. So the brochure is something you can take home with you. But if you could focus on the screen and the presentation, they are different, okay? So my office says we're going paperless, so tonight we are paperless. So Chad gave you a brief rundown. On a project like this, I kind of look at this as our 12-course meal. What we're in is the appetizer stage. It's usually kind of fancy and fun. And there's the dessert stage, which is also fancy and fun. And when you look at me, I'm the meat and potatoes, okay? And I like to get things done. Our company likes to get things done. And at some point, that has to happen. So when we start saying we like to see some action, some things happening, that's what we do. The facilities of this is really important. The, we pride ourselves in doing things right the first time. And when you talk about looking into the future, as we go through this presentation, you'll see some things that we have done, but also engaging with community college and looking into things like AI, robotics, all them start types of industries that are really growing. So I'm going to go through the presentation. The night's getting a little bit long, so I'd like to get the question and answer quick. So here we go. Who is Larson Construction? We're a third-generation family-owned company out of Iowa. All of us grew up in Iowa. I grew up in a small town in Houghton, 90 people. All of us were kind of educated in Iowa, Iowa, Iowa State, UNI grads. And we have offices in Independence and in Urbandale. We specialize in career centers and K-12 schools. We also have worked at all three universities in the state of Iowa, all community colleges in the state of Iowa. So, and outside of the state of Iowa. So we're a construction manager, design builder, and GC. 150-plus employees in the field. And then we'll just briefly go over, we also, yes, we own, lead a golf course, a manufacturing, global manufacturing company, a steel fabrication company, and then a radiator company as well as south-side lumber. Why is that brought up? Them are all different careers, okay? We employ numerous different people and different careers. Everything from engineers to machinists, to welders, to greenskeepers, all that kind of stuff. And so knowing what your students can be is important. These are, let's go back one. This is our experience within career readiness centers. And these are all across the state of Iowa. You may have heard of the Waterloo Career Center. This is two projects, five phases over seven years. And we've done a couple of tours of that with your leaders. And we originally thought maybe the principals, because they're all honestly onboard. Got to meet with Jessica and Ian and Kennedy Principal, thank you. And we thought, well, maybe they don't really need to see this because they're already onboard. But the visions that they have are stunted, if that's a good word, by not seeing what it can be, okay? So you'll see some of these pictures. I haven't seen them. They need to go. They need to go see the place. So I won't go through all the pictures, but, well, I might. Quickly, that's the entrance to the Waterloo Career Center. Upper right, lower right is a design studio. And they're, they're creating their own T-shirts, marketing, all this type of stuff. And they're selling them and creating profit. And that is a big piece of partnering with your local community and businesses to make sure it is a partnership and they don't think that we're there to hurt them, we're there to help them. On the left is the First Career Center. That was a moment. That is a career fair at a high school level and approximately 80 to 90 businesses there. This is also where we have HVAC plumbing. That's a machining center. On the lower right is a healthcare, kind of in a, you know, that is a state-of-the-art thing. It actually brings, takes on fluids. And anyway, we have a couple of stories out with this group, but we won't get into that. Electrical, yeah, who was it that couldn't go there? That was Chris. Chris Gates would not touch that. So anyway, and then electrical, so a lot of different things at the Waterloo Career Center. This is Kirkwood Community College. Right there on the left is Tyler Cooks, the superintendent here. He's actually in the crowd tonight. Thanks Tyler for showing up. Lives in Cedar Rapids, raising his kids in Cedar Rapids. And he built that. That was a, if you haven't been to Iowa Hall at Kirkwood Community College, please go. That is state-of-the-art. Upper right's another program, agriculture that they have and engineering. At Kirkwood, their aeronautics program. So this was amazed me when we got the opportunity to build this. But that is, upper left is a rocket engine. So our young people in the state of Iowa are doing everything to these. And there's a helicopter, but they're learning how to fix them, how to design them. On the right-hand side is a Cessna. So they're taking that apart and experimenting. And you can just see, like, that is a mechanic shop. That's a aeronautic mechanic shop. That's what we're talking about. Hawkeye Community College, the upper left is the, actually, this is really good kind of proof of the partnership with the community colleges. So that is at the Waterloo Career Center, Career Fair. And they're there recruiting kids to come to the nursing program. So them types of partnerships are awesome. Upper right is surveying there at Hawkeye. That's Brad Snyder. He's in the audience as well. And he's raising the kids. His kids are at Grantwood right now, or Keaton is anyway. Lower left is a business program and lower right is welding. So them types of programs, make sure I'm making this, so these are the types of places we've built. So have experience in. Independence Junior, Senior High, so this is close to home because that's where my kids are going to school. But that's the carpenter shop, which that is actually about 12 years old. But when you look at that compared to your carpenter shops, if you've been them, it's a little bit different. And then upper right is welding. So this is a great story and a little bit different story than I shared with the group about a week ago. But this here is a young lady that went to school. And when we talk about kids wanting to change their program, so she went to school in, I don't know the right terminology right now, beautician. And she was a hairdresser and did all that. And she didn't like it. And so she was in her career, doing her thing, and her dad was doing welding and she just wasn't happy. And he's like, why don't you come in with me and do some welding? And she's been welding with us. That's actually at our shop in Independence. And she's been welding with us for 10 years now and she's phenomenal. And I say this all the time, we had another example with Jade Byrne. She started welding with us in this shop. And then she like wanted to go out in the field because she was bored inside. So then she went and was an ironworker. She loved to be up, you know, 60 feet in the air welding. And now she's building an auditorium for Jessup High School. She's a superintendent for us. So growing them types of people is what we do, similar to what you're doing. And I guess I'm pretty passionate about young people, so. Automotive is another thing right in Independence that we do. This is Northeast Iowa Community College. So upper left, I love this picture. That is the entrance to their diesel mechanic program. Okay, that's the new culture of career centers. And what changes is when they come into the building, they start dressing differently. It is a professional setting because it should be a professional setting. They're professional, they have a professional career when they come out of that building. That is an EMT program. Lower left is their manufacturing program. Lower right is nursing. So that's our experience. And I did go through that pretty quick, but trying to be respectful of your time. And in here, there's many more, but this is just, you know, kind of our brochure of the things that we have done above and beyond. So we are, and I am personally honored to be here tonight and super excited about your future and sincerely passionate about the future of your kids. And you are leaders in the education. And Iowa's always been a leader historically in education. So you guys are really leaders because this is important and it's starting to happen. Waterloo Career Center was a, was a springboard for some of us. If, that started in 2014. And if some of you may remember, but that was a pretty big deal. In 2014, it was kind of first of its kind. But even when we talked to them in Waterloo, and Dr. Grover heard this, it could be better. So kind of what you're coming up with, they would rather have it in the high school. It's, it's separate. And their future looks like they may put it in their high school. So this, this can be better than that and that was the best, okay? So that's career centers. I need to go into construction now. Any questions on career centers though?
I just have a quick question. I'm just wondering if there's like a small mobile display of some of these items that we could experience and invite the community to experience?
I could look into that. They won't experience the Waterloo Career Center, but that's a great question.
I think one of the things that we're working on is trying to get some field trips. Want to get some people to some places. I know Chris wouldn't mind me saying this, you know, we're so excited about our work. But as we walked through the Waterloo Career Center, I was so glad I had a chance to go in Waterloo, having been in Texas and Nebraska and other places. So I've seen a lot, but it's great to know that we have this just right down the street. And our heart ached thinking about what we want to do for our kids and how much work we have to do. But you just have to experience. Now, I called President Garlock on my drive back and I was like, have you all ever been to it? We need to, and they're excited. They, they want to share what they've learned through their processes. And then Saturday, I was up at the University of Iowa. I had the opportunity to hear Matt, superintendent up in Iowa City. They're going to be opening up their career center in 2025. And so it's like, we are definitely headed in the right direction. I think ours is more personalized, like you say, on-site. But we want to do our best to first go visit some other places so that we can see. And then as we move through, we'll have some things happening in our building that we'll be able to showcase to as we go forward. So, so thank you for that. Exposure is key.
And before we move on to the delivery model that Larson can provide for us, I think it's important to also understand that we were talking to Waterloo about their graduation rates. They were at about 75% graduation rates until this happened. Now they're at 96% graduation rate. They, they have school districts from all over the Cedar Valley coming to their career center. So Waterloo, Columbus, and other small districts are coming in. And that brings funding to their district as well. So you, you never know where this can lead to, but there's potential for us to, to be the leader in our educational facilities. Yeah, so there was also, so was it eight years they've been open? They've had one physical altercation at the Waterloo Career Center in eight years. Because when they're there, they're treated like professionals and they, and they want to be there. They also have a hard time getting them to go back to their homeschool. So go back to east or west because they want to stay and work on those projects that they're, they're doing there. So it is transformational with the kids. And then also they're leaving there with the ability to go out into the workforce with certifications or other degrees that they can step right into a job in the workforce.
And just to further answer your question, I think a good, close place that we could start looking at is Kirkwood. And Waterloo is really close too. But we can bring some of that stuff and then we may be able to talk about some virtual walkthroughs if there was something where we could get a community that may be interested in looking at something like that.
Excellent, thank you.
Work in progress, but that's a good. Any other questions on career centers?
I would just quickly comment that, you know, when we were down at our national conference, I mean, some of the sessions that I sat in were directly related to this. And, you know, everything that we're hearing tonight is exactly what those districts were talking about. I mean, it was transformative for these kids. The types of industries that were in those communities, how they partner up, how they give these kids some real experiences, some of the hang, like, there was like a hangar. I mean, kids are working on airplanes, actually, you know, doing the mechanical work on that. I know that there's real interest in this community for that type of work too. So just that potential is pretty exciting. So I love the fact that all these examples are in Iowa. Just, I think we all know, there's some great examples around the country too. So, you know, if we could do some virtual tours to actually see what the potential is. And I think that we're always impacted when we hear directly from kids, right? So you talk about the behavioral issues. If we can actually hear from kids and how this is really getting them far more engaged in education, I think that would be great for us.
I have a question about the Waterloo Center. Do all of the students in the Waterloo school, do they all go through the career center? Or is it a, do we have a percentage? How many kids actually have that experience or choose that experience?
We don't have hard data, but we, it is an optional thing that can happen. But their numbers increased exponentially from the first year they opened to now. And I would, I don't have the numbers offhand, but I know their population dramatically increased because they, people wanted to go to school there.
And then I have one additional question. It's really probably for all of you. You have experience and you own some companies that provide services in the CTE area. I'm just curious about, who do we get to teach these courses? Is there some professional development for some of our existing staff? Or is it a, is it an industry expert? I just am curious about that.
So it truly is one of these things, when you build it, they will come. And we are in Iowa, so. But for example, the electrical instructor at Waterloo Career Center came from the trades. Really, the building kind of sold him as well as some people that were reaching out throughout the industry saying, hey, we're looking for. And so he came from, he was an electrical supervisor that was in five, probably 10 years from retirement, but was ready to make a change in his life. And between, you know, the stress and some other things like that. So that's one example, that it can come, you know, directly from the, from there. But when he saw the culture, I'll call it, or the surroundings and the environment that he was going to be teaching in, it was completely different than what he grew up, where you went in the back alley to teach trades. And so he, he loved it and he's happy. And when you see the spaces, that's a part of it. And there's, so there's a lot of other ways besides just going to industry experts. You would take that path. And there may be teachers that their favorite thing to do, either an English teacher, but they love to work in the carpenter shop at home. So it's a combination, but it's about people wanting to work in that environment, from my perspective.
When we visited Waterloo a couple of times now, that question's been raised and it's, I have a heartache over it too. The director there said that was one of their top questions. And then as they got into the specifics, they either said, oh, we can grow someone from within. And then as they got into the specifics, they either said, oh, we can grow someone from within. And in more cases than not, someone came out of the community from that industry and wanted to participate and be there. But he said it was a combination, but they, they found staff.
So are we, would we be increasing workforce? I just want to make sure that we're being respectful and protecting our, our current workforce.
I think it's a good question that we, we do want to be respectful. There also might need to be some shifts in terms of how we look at programming and who's credentialed, who's willing to go get credentialed. But you, you can't design all the new program we have with the current certification. So there will have to be some look at a different skill set that we'll need. And so opportunity within, opportunity from external as well.
And I was just, oh, go ahead. As you're considering the, the new staff that you will bring in, because like you said, some of the certifications don't line up. Hopefully that will be an option for some who are in-house who may be interested. Of course, I'm going to say to consider the diversity piece as well. That is huge. I don't like to see, because we have a very diverse district. So when I see that there is a lack of diversity in any of our dealings on this level, I'm not comfortable with it. That's something that really needs to be considered. And I know being in this area, that's kind of hard sometimes, but I would like to see some effort put toward that for sure.
Thank you.
And there will, there will also be.
I'm putting you to a microphone.
Okay, thanks. I, yeah, I kind of got cut off there for a bit, so this is already reiterated. But just kind of timing in, because I caught a little bit about what you were just saying right there. But that was something I had just noted is, you know, just making sure that we are thinking about the leaders and who's representing as CTE leaders and those who are identifying as non-white. We want to make sure that that is, that our students are feeling welcomed and supported in their career preparation. So, you know, just making sure that that's part of this learning environment is ensuring that our students can see themselves in those that are represented as the leaders of the CTE pathways. So, yeah, I, I may have just reiterated something, but I, I want to note that because I was half hearing things.
No, that was correct.
I think it's important to also make a note that the reason we would like to bring Larson on now is because they have the expertise in the physical facilities. We're still in draft form on some of our programs and academies. However, we need to make sure that when we are talking about what we're going to provide, can we do that from a facility standpoint responsibly and fiscally responsibly? And so the Dreamers over here are, are doing great work, but we got to make sure that we can do that work within what we have, but also add to that in a fiscally responsible way. So, and there will also be need for some teachers to teach English and math and science and social studies still because we're, we're going to need to have those academic areas covered as well. So, and, and also to, one last point is, we're focusing on the, the manufacturing piece, but we're talking cybersecurity, AI, avionics, all these different things that we could potentially have. And building facilities that can pivot and adjust as the world changes and jobs change as well. So building a laboratory that may focus on avionics today, but spaceships tomorrow.
That rigorous course environment for all of our students as well. So you're getting to get the job training, but you're also going to get highly rigorous content as well as AP courses. And, you know, so how you choose, which way you, you might want to go to college. But hey, if you have this industry certification in welding, maybe you can work on the side while you're going to college. Or if you don't, you can say, I want to do nursing. And you go through this program and you're like, uh, nursing's not my, my fit. Or you go through nursing and you realize I could be a doctor. And it's because of the increase in rigor and responsibility. So we want to make sure that's a focus as well too. It's not just the careers, but it's also the academic preparation.
Sorry, I had one question. Boy, look at that little rabbit hole we went down.
It's good. Anything else?
I'm done.
Okay. Yes, so Bertie Meyer chirped into my ear. We better get through the project delivery options for you and your district. So there are three project delivery methods that the school district or any entity that's getting public funding are allowed to do. The construction manager as advisor contract, CMA. A construction manager at risk contract, CMR. And the general contractor contract, design, bid, build. So two of these have been done for a long, long time. CMA, the top one, and GC or design bid build, the bottom one. A year and a half, two years ago, construction manager at risk was brought on as an option. And we'll just go through and describe these real quick for you. And we'll let you know kind of what the recommendation is and go from there. So CMA, once again, that is an advisor where the owner chooses their construction professional. You can do that immediately. The CMA is the owner's consultant through design, construction and completion. Design being the key component here. The CMA competitively bids all work through organized bid packages. And so that means it's really important. That means that your local contractors and local businesses will have the opportunities to do any and all of the work. The CMA delivery method can save money and assure quality design and construction. The CMA delivery method can expedite your schedule. And the CMA in this instance cannot self-perform construction activities or, or contract with the contractors. Okay? The delivery of this method, the owner engages the CMA of their choice. The CMA develops the request for proposal documents for design firms at some point very soon. We need to get an architect and a design firm on and then manage that selection process of the design team. The owner contracts with the design firm of their choice to finalize the team, meaning the CMA, Larson Construction would be on the team with the architect that's chosen. And then we go through the design process. And then the second item there, CMA leads and manages the design and CMA develops bid package and leads through the construction process. Okay? Under a CMR, it's very, very similar to a CMA. Owner can pick the construction professional through a lengthy process. That's one difference. It has to go through a competitive process, which takes quite a bit of time. The CMR is the owner's consultant through design. The CMR still competitively bids out all the work. So local contractors and businesses can bid on the work. The CMR delivery method saves money. CMR delivery method can expedite your schedule. CMR can self-perform construction activities. So we would be, the CMR would be the bidding, would be bidding possibly against other contractors. Okay? This delivery method, the owners are required to go through a fairly lengthy, like I mentioned, RFQ and RFP process to choose a CM. Okay? The owner then engages CM of their choice. CMR develops RFP documents. Owner contracts with the design firm. CMR assists in the design and budgeting process. The CM develops bid packages and manages the bid process and then leads it through construction. So the only difference really, or a couple of differences between the CMA and CMR is you have to go through a competitive process that's fairly lengthy and you don't get a CM onboard as soon as, as soon as you would like to. Then the GC, we'll talk about that a little bit. General Contractor, this has kind of been the tried and true where we bid it. So you cannot pick your construction professional. You're required to pick the lowest bidder. And the GC is not involved in the design or the pre-construction of your Career Center. The delivery is the owner engages a design firm through a process. The design firm designs a project. The GC bids a project and then the low GC builds it. So you're required to contract with the low construction professional. Why CMA for the Cedar Rapids Career Readiness Program? The number one thing is time. As Dr. Grover mentioned, there's communities around here working diligently on their programs. I think the Cedar Rapids School District has a distinct opportunity to be the, the best, to be frank. You have a large quantity of students, three high schools, and the ability to impact, four high schools, sorry, thank you, to impact a tremendous amount of kids within your own district. But you are centralized and what's happened with rejuvenation of the downtown can easily happen with the rest of this community. And so that is, anyway, I got off on a little bit of a tangent. But time is still important to get this done because when you think of seventh and eighth graders or freshmen, how many kids are we going to miss if we don't get this done fast? And also can you, you know, we want to be a leader. So moving on. CMA provides the ability to fast-track a quality design and in an expedited fashion. And I want to focus on the quality. It is so vital and important to do this right the first time. So there is definitely going to be some give and take. Some of the what Chad and Adam have had, we're going to have the same thing because I'm the person that want, we need to do it right. The impact needs to be as great as possible. And we can do that quickly, but we can't get the cart in front of the horse. That's my grandpa used to say. So time is a big one. Project budget and project scope. That needs to be determined swiftly, but the scope needs to be correct and the budget needs to be determined. There's a lot of moving parts, as most, as everybody in here knows, with the elementaries that need work, the upcoming bond referendum and what we do here. So that needs to be sorted out and we need to know what we're talking for budget. And along with that comes scope. Quality, again, I keep going back to quality, but the correct construction for each program and space and choice, you choose the construction professional. So them are the four things that I would recommend, CMA for your project here. And we would just love to get onboard and be honored to start leading this process. And it needs to happen soon because if we don't get started, the programming and all this that you, that Adam's been working on is great. But to be frank, the design and construction of these facilities to get it right takes more time than the programming. No, yeah, no. But it's, you know, so we are talking, you know, stones, we're talking brick and mortar. And we need to do it right the first time and that takes a lot of planning. And it's going to be a wonderful collaboration effort because, you know, we're as passionate about this as you are. And so we're looking forward to that. What was the one other thing I was going to add to this? Do you remember? All right. That, that I guess we have, oh, I have the one thing I like to read off. This is, this is close, this is North Liberty. And so this is on the verge of being a little sales. But this is a quote that I absolutely love. And Larson Construction has gone full throttle, navigated around an nasty spring and essentially turned what could have been a potentially year-long project into about a six to seven month job. They didn't have to embrace this. They didn't have to push as hard as they pushed. They could have said, no, we can't do it. But they've really jumped onboard with us and are going to make this happen for our kids. What they build here will leave a legacy. And that's what we're going to do here. So that was in the newspaper, so we didn't ask for that.
I have a question probably for Chad. What are the district procurement requirements when we're looking at like bidding out and stuff? I mean, I guess I'm a little confused between like CMA and CMR. And it seems to me that someplace in there, we're required to go through so many bids and then lowest reasonable and responsible.
So according to the way the, the laws are written, with CMA, you can engage with a contractor to have them come on as a consultant and help you with that process. They, the negative or the caveat to that is they can't personally perform any of the work. And so we're still going to bid out all of our work and take low bid on that. And then we would hold those contracts for each of those packages for that project. CMR, there would be, it's, it's very similar to how we engage with a, an architect firm. Same kind of process when we do CMR. We do an RFP and we take them on their quality of work and, and their interview and then we can select that person. The CMA does allow us to, to expedite our choice according to the way that's written.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, you know, I, I believe in this work and I, I do believe in the citizens of Cedar Rapids. I really do think that the community wants what's best for students and that understanding that students are community members and, and we'd like to keep them as community members. So I, I really do believe that people have hope and will invest in our students. I, I'm curious what happens to this plan if the referendum does not pass.
The bond? So we are going to be looking at our buckets of money and we're going to be looking at how we can strategically fund this project through the money that we have right now, whether that be PEPAL or a little bit of both SAVE and PEPAL while continuing with the elementary plan. The timeline that we have, '25 and '26, we are, we can't wait for the bond to be able to do that because we need to be designing and planning our facilities while these guys finish up what they're doing. And the reason that's so important is because of the fact that we need to make sure the facilities we, we build in our schools are going to serve the programming that we're, we're building. So having someone that has experience in building facilities like this to be able to answer or ask those tough questions, even like today when we were at Wash and Jeff and the, the questions that came up about our facilities in general, it's important to have someone onboard that can answer those, those questions for us. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Is there any plan or thought around asking our, specifically our business community, but our community to essentially fundraise for some of this cost?
Yeah. Do you want to answer that one or?
Yeah. So we've been engaged with Economic Alliance. Recently, putting the numbers together. I think that that's why it's so important to do this in a, on parallel tracks together so we can get a right number to that community. And I think we've been told there's really good interest to support it. But having right numbers that we can paint a vision for with clarity will be really important. So walking along those two sides, just that conversation alone surfaced the need to have expertise alongside of us to say, if we do X, it's going to cost Y. And so we can feel confident when we say, hey, we need X number of dollars. We can stand behind that and that the donors will have confidence in that as well.
And our neighbor to the north also shared with us that they were also feeling this through when they wanted to first build the College and Career Center up in Waterloo. And they specifically said, if you build it, you will have businesses that will want to be a part of this. Because they see the importance of creating a workforce that would not only go into their field, but also stay here in Iowa and be the next generation.
And then, so we've met, and actually you guys set it up, met with the Economic Alliance. And then we're a member of that and going to reach out directly. Doug Newman was going to try to do lunch today, but, and yeah, we, we need, it's good timing. We need people within our businesses, all of them. So, and, and it's exciting to have young, young people. And yep, I'll just end with that, but I can.
I would add, the conversations we just had today with Travis and the principals walking those schools, it was permission giving or when we talk about buy-in. The principals talked and sounded differently when we talked about space because they knew that there was a professional in the room who knew how to do the things we were talking about. And it was, gave me great confidence, saying, no, this is, this is real. This is, this is going to happen. We're going to do big things here. And having him alongside of us on that journey, there is a level of permission giving for people to dream bigger, to, to have confidence and to buy into something because they know it's real and it's going to get started.
Any other questions? Thank you, Adam, Chad and Travis. We, we appreciate all the information. It's a lot to absorb. I think we're all pretty excited about what the future brings here for this. So is there a motion now to close the work session and return to the regular board meeting?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. For the ease of the directors, we're going to stay in this arrangement. We have one last action item left for our regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement between the Cedar Rapids Community School District and Larson Construction for the 2023 through 2025 school years?
So moved.
Is there a second? This is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
President Garlock?
Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We stand adjourned at 7:39. Thank you.